All right, start with Roll Call. It's on to me.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Mayor? Here. Councilwoman.
Here.
Microphone's not working.
It's not working.
Not working still? I'm about to get it loud.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, I'll just try again because if you leave a little closer it sounds like. I'm starting off with the police department as a presentation of promotions.
Yes, uh, yes, I want to bring you up to date. Uh, we made two promotions in the last month. Sergeant, uh, Paul, please step forward. I want to let you know that Sergeant Paul came to us in 2018. Six years of law enforcement experience and in a short time he's been with us. He's a recipient of numerous awards. Two more, please. Life sentence award, uh, the citation is also recognized with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, policy. So Sergeant Taylor. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Raphael Benicourt. Lieutenant Benicourt started with us in nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, in, uh, 2012. He's been in law enforcement since he started his career back in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, he's been in several positions at the police department, including patrol supervisor, corporal sergeant, and now lieutenant as of last month. He's also a recipient of numerous awards and served as a self-award through the Leesburg Bourbon Club.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Now, bringing this point, consent agenda will be approved in the minutes of November nineteenth, twenty nineteen, council meeting and the school choice proclamation. Is anybody in the public who should speak on this at this time? There are no comments, I make a motion to second.
I made the motion to accept the consent agenda for November nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There are none, motion passes four of us.
Moving into ordinance section, we have the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash twelve dash five nine eight, sexual offender.
Ordinance twenty nineteen dash twelve dash five nine eight, ordinance of the city of Mascot, Florida, deleting and replacing section eleven six, sexual offenders with section eleven six, restrictions for persons convicted of certain sex offenses. Re-establishing residency restrictions prohibiting offenders from establishing a temporary or permanent residence within twenty-five-hundred feet of a school, childcare facility, park, church, public library, or playground. Creating certain defined safety zones requiring offenders to declare themselves offenders when entering a public emergency shelter. Prohibiting offenders from residing within five-hundred feet of another person convicted of the same or similar offenses. Providing that the measurement of such distance shall cross municipal or county boundaries, providing for exceptions, providing for enforcement, providing for justification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for ineffective dating.
Anybody in the public who should speak on this matter at this time? All right, saying there are none, moving on to the next ordinance, first reading of ordinance. Oh, yes.
Motion.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no questions, just don't give any motion in a second. Okay, second. All right, I make a motion in second.
Remove the adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen twelve five nine eight, sexual offender. Second, um, if I can just say this is the first reading, so we're doing the first reading, is that correct, Jen?
Yes, and maybe just, just a quick highlight of, of, of why this was, um, brought back. The state established, uh, the sexual offender, uh, legislation in two thousand and four, uh, that created a one-thousand, um, foot, um, limit for schools, park, childcare facility, playgrounds, et cetera. The city passed its ordinance in two thousand and five, which increased the distance to twenty-five-hundred feet, um, and the sentence, the ordinance has not been adopted, updated since that time, other than when we added citations to our code compliance. So, uh, a home that has got an offender can actually also be cited under code case in addition to this legislation. Couple of the quick highlights that Andrew's addressed in here is, um, the definition of a sexual offender, to rewrite it to include out-of-state offenders. The current ordinance does not include, um, safety zones, the new ordinance establishes them. The current ordinance does not address out-of-state convictions, um, so there's zero protection beyond what the state has prescribed, and as noted, the new ordinance will cover out-of-state convictions. The code compliance, while it's not new, it is a tool, um, that can also be used on a land, uh, owner or landlord if they're renting, uh, a premise. They're also required that a offender, uh, notify the local police department within thirty days before relocation into the city to ensure they meet state and local guidelines. We've included park, playground, and recreation facility to meet both public and private. So even those that are within neighborhoods and within HOAs will be classified as recreational and public facilities. Two sexual offenders cannot live in the same residence, um, and in case of an emergency, offender must advise, show to personnel of their registration with the state as a sexual offender, as there are included in updating our ordinance, which I think we may as well be long enough updated in the state here.
Yes, I think, uh, what you can think of it is, is as far as locally is, uh, Mascot is down here in protection, Lake County is up here. Now you're on behalf of Lake County and above and beyond, if you adopt your ordinance.
All right, my last question is against the Department of Above and Beyond, you all cities require notification of their local police department, that's when we're doing the above and beyond.
The state statute requires, uh, that the sheriff.
Okay. How do our, how do we let a new citizen know that if they do pass that law?
When this law is passed, all citizens in the city of Mascot are charged with instructive knowledge of all laws and regulations on books. Okay, so ignorance of the law is not a, is not an excuse, but as far as how it's, uh, publicized, that's a policy matter.
Okay.
And what I could see about the mayor and council is while they are required to go to the sheriff and we'd like to think the sheriff would notify us, the sheriff could also be notified by our updated ordinance that if someone makes notice, at least they can hopefully advise them, not only do you register with us, but you need to proceed to the local department.
That would be very helpful.
Mayor, how would you know that you're per ten Sheffield Park at six thirty-eight, you have to record?
Very much. Any discussion on this, there are any motion in second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There are none, motion passes five of us. All right, now for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one dash five nine nine, updating and redefining the city's legal boundary.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one dash five nine nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Mascot, Lake County, Florida, updating and redefining the city of Mascot's legal boundaries pursuant to Florida statutes one sixty-six point zero three one subsection three. Providing directions to the city clerk to file a set update with the Department of State and municipal co-corporated, providing for appeal of all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for ineffective dating.
Mayor, council, look, this is, as Andrew said, it's a five-year update that's, uh, reported to the state and includes anything, you know, that was, um, annexed into the city limits, um, after the last report, um, which was April seventh of two thousand and fourteen. And they're used in revenue sharing allocation, even can directly be tied, um, in reference to the census, you know, in terms of federal use in reference to, um, how dollars are
And again, this is the first reading. And, uh, council, any questions on this? Anyone in the public who should do the rest of this matter? All right, hearing is saying none, and a motion for a second.
I make the motion to approve the first reading, uh, ordinance twenty oh one vice by law, updating and redefining the city's legal boundary.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There are none, motion passes five of us. Move on to your business, uh, she's tax-dated the CRA for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, council, um, a few years ago, when the property values were sinking, we didn't have to do this because the CRA, um, didn't generate any, any revenue. And now that it does, um, the council has taken action to move the funds from the general fund into the restricted, um, CRA fund. The dollar amount, um, that is due this year is on the increment value, uh, represents a payment to the CRA of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. It stays within the same, like, account per se, but it's restricted on what it can be used for and, and based on your CRA plan, you have to form a, you don't.
Is, is that for redevelopment and CRA or?
Right now, uh, ninety percent of, of, of last year's went to fund code enforcement because majority of the work is in the CRA. Our CRA is for the extensive north and south, but it also would be what would be used if you did a fifty streetscape beautification, if there was signage, you know, or some type of economic incentive to a business involving, you know, uh, some building, um, upgrade or improvement, all depending on what might be available in the fund.
Any discussions with council? Anybody in the public who can discuss this matter? Hearing is saying none, and a motion for a second.
Um, the city paid the city of Mascot's community redevelopment agency its twenty nineteen share of property taxes in an ordinance of chapter one sixteen-three, three to eighty-seven four statute.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There are none, motion passes five of us. Now this time we're in the public comment section, uh, we have Mr. Vance Gilke coming to the stand to introduce his name.
Hi, boy, that's a fast meeting. Uh, yeah, I just want to introduce myself. Uh, I haven't been here before. Uh, I'm, I, I write a fiscalwatch dot blog called FiscalRangers dot com. I cover most of, I've been there, we have a city, this is the last one I haven't been to, um, and I've been doing it for like twelve years. I go to most of the county board meetings, most of the school board meetings, um, many of the cities up north, and, uh, so I'm familiar with all of these issues, and, uh, so it's great to get down here and, yes, they are here, they do have meetings, so with that, uh, you know, I do make videos of meetings, so I put them on my YouTube channel, Fiscal Rangers, Florida, um, and the blog is FiscalRangers dot com, and I'm on Facebook also, so, um, you know, it's one of those things that sometimes I end up having an idea that I give you, um, like right now, I'm helping Howard find an accountant because they have lost their accountant. So, uh, just, uh, gratis, I'm just retired and do this to keep my foot in the fire, and so thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, I've seen Vance and Gilke at different school board meetings, uh, all of those often, and he brings ideas, um, whether he might have some kind of positive or negative criticism about some others, or he just brings some ideas to them about, like, better do something to what they add, and I definitely appreciate it. Even if you're not here in Mascot, I still appreciate your, your input to these things as well. All right. Mr. Grant?
Yes, I just have one thing to, to nice to discuss with you. Um, at the last meeting, we discussed the, uh, Miki's curiact for, uh, the Yangs case, uh, that's a police reported deal, uh, between the last meeting and this meeting, actually just last week, I received the adopted draft brief. Um, council's direction at the last meeting was to create a resolution, uh, that, uh, would allow the state to sign on to the appeal in the event of, that council would have the opportunity to review the brief and support. The time that the brief came in last week, and then, of course, that being after the deadline for this meeting, uh, and then their deadline, and there by there, I mean, the city of Miami Beach, they'll be filing the brief, uh, I'm not quite sure exactly when they're filing their deadline for cities to sign on the brief orders, it is December sixteenth. So obviously a fall between meetings. Accordingly, it wasn't time to get a resolution on the agenda, but a resolution is not necessary. So if you're interested in, if the council is interested in having Mascot sign on the brief, then a simple motion tonight would be all that's needed. As far as the substance, I have reviewed the brief and reviewed the law cited in the brief. Uh, the main arguments are that the circuit court that found the human rights ordinance in Orange County preempted, lacks subject matter jurisdiction, you know, simply because Orange County was never made a part of, that's an argument. And then the other meat and potatoes of the arguments come with the FICRA, which is the Florida Civil Rights Act, does not explicitly preempt, uh, legislation regarding human rights, that's obviously clear, there is no explicit, uh, preemption. The court comment at on implied preemption, and the rest of the argument, the brief argument, that there is no implied preemption, specifically because the Florida Supreme Court has said in case law that local governments can regulate beyond the FICRA mandates. So that is what the, the brief is, is tailoring this argument to. I don't have any issue with any of the points of law or the reason there, I think that they are good arguments. Of course, I can have a forecast on fifth DCA will rule, but, um, I think the brief, uh, is, is something that I wouldn't have any issue putting my name behind.
I think what I've read from the, I actually loved, basically that the city was never specifically responsible for it, but because they were, even though they weren't named, they were made, somebody was in there, like, they weren't, they weren't specifically said, hey, you're a part of this, um, this new work, uh, the file, and they were not named as a defendant.
That's, that's correct. This is a dispute between two private parties, uh, and the city simply had ordinance that was at play in the original case, uh, that allows individuals to find redress and provide cause of action in, in court by this ordinance in Orange County. However, Orange County was not joined in, so they were not able to defend their orders. And that is the first and foremost argument that the judge was outlawing again.
Well, that's it, my first, my first contention here is that it feels like, here's the bubble, what was happening, they, they reached outside of the graphic calendar and pulled in and had some, nothing to do with it at that point, or at least they didn't have a chance to, like you said, defend themselves, unlike they were saying.
Correct, I mean, it had something to do with it because the, the legislation, you know, essentially, uh, regulated what was at play, and it was the subject matter of the, uh, it was the subject, how the ordinance, how it works part of the original case, but yes, it goes outside the bubble to overreach beyond that and then, uh, find that, um, that ordinance unconstitutional, or in this case, unconstitutional, preempted, uh, without having the actual party who is enforcing the ordinance as a party.
All right. Council, any questions or discussion during our mission to this, or do you want to break the deal? What would you need to motion for?
I've seen a motion to allow the city to sign on to the Miki's curiact, would also be public comment on that.
Okay. What was that, the political leaders, I mean, said?
A Miki's curiact.
That's that curiact, so why would you make that motion? Anybody?
I weigh the motion that, um, that the city signed on to the Miki's curiact file.
Second.
All right, any other in the public who should speak on this at this time? Hearing is saying none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There are none, motion passes five of us.
And thank you, Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Senator Smith?
Um, yes, um, I brought an item back because after the last meeting, uh, definitely wasn't clear, um, in reference to what was the intent of the council. Councilmember Rasher made a motion to remove one of the vendors from the vendor list. All that did was remove them from the list. It had nothing to do with the contract or the work agreement, so having them removed from the list, at least tells me there's some question, there's some issue here of concern, so I need direction because based on where we're at, we just move on as if because it was not to terminate a contract. What I did do, because we do have two IT companies, um, I spoke with ITech, which is the same company that services the city of Mount Verde, we actually recommended that, Mount Verde, when they have a hacking problem, uh, in terms of there, and advised them, how much would it cost if we eliminated Shea Solutions? And they said it would cost the city two thousand dollars more a month, so twenty-four thousand dollars, and last year we paid stations, uh, Shea Solutions, twenty-six thousand dollars. And that was including a variety of projects in there, so you guys can pick whether we have one vendor or two vendors, but there isn't a dollar savings from the standpoint of how things get done. It may slow some things down, for example, your laptops were done today by Ken here and made available possibly a little quicker than we could have gotten turnaround. In addition to that, um, because of the short delay, if you have information in reference on what are his duties and what are the duties of ITech, what's been accomplished. So not knowing what the intent was to remove the vendor from the vendor list, which is nothing more than a housekeeping list for the auditors, I just wanted to gauge that what was the concern or the intent from council. I think Councilmember Rasher had stated that she didn't reveal that Shea Solutions brought a benefit to the city, and I just wanted to build a detail to you that if he doesn't bring the benefit, apparently somebody's going to charge us two thousand dollars more a month to do what he was doing, so again, pick whichever vendor you want, it's not an issue from staff, but if it was a financial issue, you just need to be aware of that. It's going to end up costing about the same. Either way, we just would not have some of the onsite presence, some of the small projects that got to get taken care of, small things like helping out with setting up a printer and the cord saw, so we're actually helping with wiring, um, in order to run cable and what have you, to set up, um, some of the electrical systems in the departments. Larry can tell you that, um, within the last couple of weeks, um, spent over maybe twenty hours of working on our new SCADA system to get it integrated and, and to work in a, with the system. So if there's an issue with the company, I don't know what that would be in reference to, with the council, unless, you know, that was, something's happened outside of my realm of knowing, some interaction, um, but other than that, then, uh, because I don't want to leave an issue just hanging and have someone come back to me in two to three months and say, well, I thought we terminated that person, when that's not what was done, I just need that certification from the council on what you want to do.
Any direction you'd like to go with the ordinance?
I think that we should, um, take the Shea Solutions and save that one, and one that IT.
ITech can run, run the wire, because ITech can do almost everything that Shea Solutions is doing, and I.
Yeah, but it's going to cost us more money.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Costs us the same.
It's about, it's, it looks like right now we're paying Shea Solutions twenty-six to ITech to be asked to spend twenty-four, so technically ITech could be about twenty-two hundred dollars per year. It's the value that we assign to the local individual that gets here. I think, honestly, I just, I need to know that, that twenty-six hundred dollars is not coming with more value than just twenty-six hundred dollars. So if it has an extra benefit, three notes I wrote here were.
Well, I'll give you an example. Our entire new webpage process was handled strictly by Shea Solutions, from both helping us narrate and research who the companies were, to absolute smooth transitions of the day that it went live. We had no problems in being ADA compliant. There are small little projects that are given to them that don't have to go to ITech. Can ITech do all of that? Yes, but in addition to the thirty-three thousand that they charge, that's the twenty-four hundred or two thousand additional months just for a set number of hours. If we give them the same projects and the same items, then there's going to be additional costs on that, so I mean, so it's not a dollar issue, so I don't know what the issue is.
So is that two thousand dollars a month is based on what we expect them to do, and if we ask them to go above and beyond, is that costly more?
Yeah.
And if we ask them to do less, are we going to save these money?
No, because that's a flat fee, we buy for hours for service, and then if you have special projects, let's say you order additional servers and it takes additional time to set them up, and new computers that get reset and whatever, then there's an added charge in terms of that process. One thing of having two companies is sometimes it helps you when one says you need to work, buy four servers, and we had that instance before, and with Shea, we found out that we needed only one, so saved over twelve thousand dollars. We had four distinct phone companies when I was here. Think about that. I had to dial another phone number to reach the police department and the fire department, were now consolidated under one phone system with their assistance and, and, and their help. We had four internet networks. We weren't integrated, we're now integrated, you know, and so there is definite distinct benefit that the other company can do, but again, it's not a dollar issue, so I'm not sure why the reason change.
Can we point to anything that they've done wrong? I mean, would we ask, what, what did they do wrong to facilitate canceling their contracts?
I'm not going to discuss it any further.
Then I don't, I don't want to cancel the contract.
I'll find that.
I don't know of anything that they have done wrong for us to terminate.
Does anybody have a reason to change what we're doing right now? Anybody in the public who should speak on this? All right, no change, moving right on.
Second, would you prefer?
It, there's no change to what we're doing right now.
So what we're firing, a motion because we already have a contract in place, everybody on that list has a separate approved contract by Mayor. That list is just a catch-up list for the auditors, just kind of a check, they'll say, here's everybody again, but if they pull. But if they pull the folder, we can show them the contract and meetings of what they were...
So, then do we have to go back and add them back to the list now?
I'll ask all of them, because the auditors have gotten in and out, so...
Does the motion take long? The motion to put them back on?
We can at the next meeting.
Maybe, okay.
I mean, instead of the motion to terminate the contract, we could make a motion tonight to go ahead and add them back to the vendor list that was submitted to the auditor.
I will make that motion to add them back to the vendor list.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four points.
Mayor, Council, this is a bringing up discussion that we had in July. And the reason we're bringing this up, I'm going to say this here through because I think it's appropriate to. Had a staff member violate one of the most serious rules that you have in this business, and that is to not communicate their personal agenda to elected officials. Because when you go to elected officials, all five of you aren't hearing the discussion. All five of you are not part of the decision-making process. And I don't know what information you get or you don't get. We knew back in the early part of the year that our ISO is going from a three to a 10. ISO, I have spoken with them. They have no intention of ever coming to a meeting and telling you anything. They won't even provide documents other than the copy of their letter that tells you what the rating is. And in my last conversation with them, the only way our rating changes is if we have four firefighters per shift. So, that means adding six firefighters to our current shift. Adding six firefighters could run anywhere from about $550,000 to $650,000. The only way or the recommended way that we pay for that is because it's 100% fire would be the fire fee. Our fire fee currently brings us in about $277,000. So, to get a fire fee to bring you in over $600,000, that would almost have to trip. And we would need a study from GSG to finalize that because you couldn't adopt a higher fee without a study to back that up. So, we hear that a higher ISO rating is going to cause people's insurance to be canceled, insurance to go up. Well, at least as of today, City Hall, we haven't received a single call. We haven't received a single issue. The posting that was done on the Facebook was the Fire Chiefs Insurance Agent. So, I don't know what would prompt that to happen when they're not a mascot resident and they don't live here and then would post something that people need to come down here and you all need to fix a problem. In addition to that, let's just take a little look at what it is you're being asked to pay. On a typical month, we average about 120 calls. 50% of those calls are not in the city of Mascot. 50% of those calls are involving Lake County or Groveland.
My brother asked me today, "Why did he go out of the city?"
Well, we've had that discussion. We don't have to, but if we don't, it has a ripple effect involving all the other agencies, how they infill if there's a problem. So, then someone used the argument that, "Well, if Mascot's not here, we can't get to their houses." Well, if we're out of town 50% of the time, that means somebody else is answering that call. Secondly, ISO only rates you on structural fires. They are about 5% of the calls. 95% of our calls are medical. They give you no credit for having two paramedics per shift and probably being the most, one of the most qualified medical departments in the county because they're basing everything on fire calls. And of the fire calls that we answer, the majority of them are outside the city. So, again, we're being asked to look at spending $600,000 for the county, for Groveland. That $600,000 does not get a mascot resident any safety because most of the calls are medical and a paramedic shows up. So, adding $600,000 to your budget regularly, annually reoccurring, doesn't mean that more calls will be a mascot. And it doesn't mean that anybody a mascot is any safer. In addition to that, I went back and I looked at some numbers. And if we tried to say, "Well, let's not raise the fire fee. Let's do it with taxes." Based on current values today, our tax rate is 7.55. And remember, that rate went down from 9.6147. Even at 7.55, this year is the first year that we exceeded revenue than what we had 10 years ago. So, we're just technically just above breakeven, but we've got a lower mileage rate. The highest we could range is the mileage rate is 9.5371 because there's an MSTU of .4629 that's charged for the ambulance. So, the two added together makes 10 mils. We can't go higher than 10 mils by state law. If we went to a 9.5371 mils, it would generate $320,381. That would about cover three people. So, we'd still have to raise the fire fee to cover the others. The other two factors that we don't know yet is we don't have a final price on the station. But I know it's already in excess of $3 million and was told that we should have the numbers by the end of the year on the estimated price. The fire department also has a wish of ordering a new truck at a half million dollars. And I've asked the chief to hold off on ordering a truck until we get a final price of the fire station so we know what we're getting into. There are safer grants out there where we can get firefighters. And the federal government will pay a portion of it for the first couple of years. But there is no free money. There is no free lunch. It becomes our cost. And when I got here, part of the problem was is that we had firefighters from a safer grant and we weren't going to be able to keep them. And we were looking at the position of actually having to pay money back on the grant. And just through attrition, folks left on their own and got us down to the level. So, we didn't have to lay anybody off and we didn't have to pay anything back. My fear is to count on future money to pay today's cost is what got us in trouble in the first place. And to do that, again, to be, to me, would be very scary and foolish. One, we've been on an economic cycle for a long time. It'd be our luck in about two or three years when that grant's up. Building stops, impound fee stops. Revenue and values could go down. And then we're back at a point to where either raising village or fire. And if we are going to look at doing a fire fee, not only should we look at the six firefighters, but we should include the truck in this so that we know exactly what we can cost and how we can fund that. And so, we've got a couple of choices. Is potentially approve the $9,000 to have GSG update a fire fee and come back and tell us what the fee should be if you need to cover a little over a million dollars. We know what the tax increase would be, so we could ask them, "Hey, if you maxed out the tax rate, then what do you need to do for a fire fee to cover that amount?" Because remember, all of this was about ISO. So, the only way you fix the ISO is six people. There's no Band-Aid in between. It is six people. You hire three people, you still have an ISO of 10. So, what do the people get? They're still going to tell you supposedly their insurance is going to go up. Not every insurance company uses ISO. Insurance is a commodity. People can shop the market. And insurance rates can range, even on a house, thousands of dollars between one company and another. So, a consumer has some flexibility if they see an increase in their insurance to shop around. Now, unless their insurance is increasing by more than $450, which would be about what the fire fee would have to be just to cover the firefighters. I'm not sure why we would charge $440, $450 for somebody to save 20, 30, 40 or $100 for one year on their insurance when there's no guarantee that insurance wouldn't go up the next year. And this should have been part of the budget process. It was part of the last budget process. And we dealt with this in July. And quite honestly, I thought it was done until I know the item was brought up with elected officials behind my back.
Can you look into a little bit more into what you think of that?
Like how?
What's the budget now?
Me? Talk to Lake County about what they're paying us or how we can operate?
Well, we never have a mascot. Lake County has to come in, right?
Lake County or Groveland or Cleveland?
Lake County never comes in the mascot, one time probably every six months.
Why?
Because they're too far out. They're way, way away. That's why we've done their whole area, fifty-five square miles.
Which we don't have to.
We don't have to, no.
No, so...
I think the Lake County make the legal on fire, but when we're getting up there, they're going to turn around.
So, maybe part of the discussion is to talk with Lake County and see if there are other options on how we can provide fire.
Can you do that?
Direction asked to come from Mayor, Council?
I would don't want to be in my bones because I like to talk. I like to get those thoughts out there, so people can tell me I'm making a bad comment. I am new here, but I do, I've been thinking about this for a few days because I'm on Facebook. I'm very, you know, in that realm. People tag me and they add me to things, ask me questions right away. So, I've been thinking about this since I saw the post on Friday. And I told them, you know, "Come to me, ask those questions here. I'm not going to discuss that there." But all these points and all these numbers you've given me, all these thoughts you're giving me right now, and I'm hearing and saying is that, to be blunt, how it can be, I don't care. That's, that's your job, honestly, to take care of that. I don't care how we got here. I do know that I called my insurance company and I asked them, "Why my insurance went up $260.49?" And it's because this added $1,200 to it. But because my house is less than three years old and my roof is less than three years old, I got a discount that covered eight, nine hundred dollars of it. So, this is definitely going to be an impact. Also, it just hit in October. October 1st is when the new site went on the ISO. My insurance doesn't renew until the end of December, but they decided my rate back in October. So, people may or may not have seen it yet. So, it may not have come, you know, ringing phones or anybody getting calls yet. They may not know. Some people don't even know if their insurance changes until they all of a sudden see their, their bill goes up a few hundred dollars. If I didn't have, sort of plus my ISO, I'd have to pay that double next year. Not just a decrease, but a double decrease in one year. And they're going to take that out and then I'm going to do it. So, that's added money right there for me. That, that's essentially $520 now that would have been just from, and I would have to deal with that. And then even if we triple that, it still wouldn't cover my difference. It'd be almost around, it'd be around almost the same at that point. There's a lot of numbers I'm hearing for prices of three firefighters or six firefighters. There's no way that we should ever just basically one and a half times our taxes on people. That doesn't seem like a lot if we do. Same thing with the fire. It should be, mine is only, only mine is this affected. It could be affected more. It could be affected less. I call State Farm again, second one, because again, I wanted to figure out, State Farm pays us much. They don't use ISO at all. There's just twice as much my current amount is. So, I earned $605,000 personnel, $500,000 for a truck and $3,000, $4,000 on the fire station. I mean, over $5,000 potentially worth of spend over the next three, four, 10 years? I don't know how long we have to do that for. I'm guessing we don't have that kind of money.
The 3 million we borrowed for the fire station is a 30-year... The best you could do on a fire truck is a four-year.
You could do 10 years on a fire truck.
Well, it's $125,000 a year for five years is what we'd do in four years.
That's what God had put under our...
So, we'll extend debt and just get further in debt.
So, let's just say, for sake of this, let's say...
It is bad, but if you have to tax your citizens to pay for it, maybe there is a good money tree.
Let's talk this quick, okay? 10 years, $50,000 a year for a $500,000 truck. 30 years on three, which is safe, just 3 million for the fire station, okay? We're now talking about a $150,000 increase in what we have to bring in. And same, everything else is the same. That $150,000 a year has to come out of our taxes. That taxes, that's over 10% increase. So, now we got to increase our taxes by over 10% to make this happen after we've had year after year after year of rollbacks. If the county has options, it's free to ask. Anybody else disagree with me that we should ask the options?
Well, we've had this discussion on several occasions where Lake County, now that they're paying us isn't equivalent to how many times we actually respond to it. And they basically have shut us down.
On the day, yes.
On the payment. Well, I think it needs to really come up and we need to invite whoever they are to hear and start talking to us. Not just to stand, but tell us because we're the ones that's going to be strapped to making these decisions, raising taxes. That's not going to happen so far. But somebody within the county needs to tell us why they're not going to entertain this when we're spending mascot tax dollars for Lake County citizens. And I understand, you talked about covering a little bit of...
As I said, the problem you've got there is staff doesn't make that decision. The elected officials do. I have no control over Lake County Board of Commissioners coming here and explaining to you why they voted to cut paying cities or why they set to that amount. The best I can do is talk with the county manager and the assistant county manager involving, "What options are there if they're not going to increase the 32,000?"
I, I think it's well worth opening that discussion again. And if we have to go to a council meeting up there or a county commission meeting or something like that, then we all five need to go and sit in a council meeting or a commission meeting and ask them point one and put it at the political level. I don't want to be political about it, but it's becoming political. It doesn't need to be political. And a lot of this can be solved because we are supporting the county residents.
Every additional new dime that we spend in addition to what we're spending now is spent 50% on behalf of somebody else.
And, and we're asking the city of Mascot residents to pay 100% of that. And I, I can't agree with that.
County commissioners make their decision based on the information their staff gets them. So, I think a staff person and an official should come here.
I'm okay with that, too.
You can think that, but I can't make an elected official come.
Could I?
Well, what an invitation.
Yeah, an invitation. Because I'm not sitting here to have to increase 10% taxes. And we're going to go right back to a, about 10 mileage rate? No, I don't think so. We'll have to come up with some other ideas or some other way to do this.
That's why, my job's to give you at least the facts that we have. The only two ways to pay for it are mileage or fire. We don't have $600,000. And if you reserve, you're spending reserves on reoccurring expenses. So, what happens after three years? You have no reserves, but you still have those expenses. And those expenses will continue to go up. Insurance goes up. There's increased liability with the new firefighter we hired. That's another insurance policy we have to get involved in the government and the cancer plan. So, it's, it's an expensive proposition. So it's an expensive proposition.
I got one more key point that I forgot right down here. We'll start out by, as a member of one of the homes in this area, I know how fast work is going, okay? If this starts effecting, let's say somebody does give $1,200 a year more expense policy. That's medium case scenario from what I looked at right off the top, like me going to State Farm for instance. That's about $100 a month they have to pay in their ESTR. So to get approved for those moving houses and rebuilding, they now have to pay an additional $220 a month on top of that. The longer we take to do this, the slower it is because we have to have a resolution. Once we get the paperwork placed, whatever our option is, then if we set the ISO, they can get value because it takes a quarter or two to get it in place. So if this does change, because we don't know right now, we can see that grow slow and it could do more hurt. So I think we need to get these decisions quickly. So we're going to invite somebody. We can't wait month, month, month to do this.
We could get the information even if, you know, even from GSG. You need to all-in plenty of time for spring budget. You couldn't change, well, you could change the firefight. After public hearings and advertisements and what have you. But you couldn't change the village until budget time.
But you said that was $9,000 talking to the county and zero covers. That's what I heard.
Yeah, $9,000 to validate a study if that was an option, okay?
You have to ask them to reevaluate.
Yeah, because if I get back here, we can look at numbers and estimate based on what it raises now. But then they do it based on percentage of commercial, residential. But we're a mainly residential community. So the bulk of our fire assessment fees come off, you know, single-family residential housing.
So we're just looking at the potential. If we go that direction, we're looking at already having to have in our minds that we would be okay with adding $230 a year if it was impact free, directly for children.
As an assessment, yes, to maybe cover the cost of the personnel.
And that's the amount of the truck to the station? Having someone here?
Well, if there is an authorization, I can start conversation tomorrow with the county manager and there people in the sense of what are the options. And then he's going to have to take it back to his board and see who. Because again, they're a board of five, not one. So I mean, just in the sense of how they want to, how they want to communicate that. I mean, I don't, I don't work for them. I work for you. But the county manager's my counterpart. So I mean, we talk at the staff level, just like they take information to their council to vote on. They can provide information. I can bring it, can ask him and his assistant county manager that's over public safety to be here and based on whatever numbers of the discussion on why they're not going to pay more than 32 and what other options might be.
I would like Sean Marks invited as well, County Commissioner Marks.
We can invite him, but he's officially not our commissioner.
Who is our commissioner?
Tim Sullivan.
Oh, Tim Sullivan, yeah, okay. So we can.
Sean's coming out actually last week because he includes us in his group.
Yeah, he's going to be here.
We're hosting him next week. He goes to this mayor city manager meeting. We're hosting it next week. It's the first time he gets any money.
But I'll be here, but I don't know. If we could have more than just me here talking to this.
And this is not a new item for the county. Randy can tell you the five. It's a new item. It's not an issue in Northlake. It's only an issue in Southlake and Muniola, Claremont, Groveland. They've all talked about it. They've all complained about the inequity in the system. And they haven't changed the fees for anybody. What we did get them to do with us is take a look at what they were paying us. We went ahead and made it an annual payment so Randy didn't have to spend every month going through the invoices to see call by call. So if there's consensus to go ahead and talk to the county about options and why the decision was made where they're at and are there other ways out of this? And them sharing in costs since they're benefiting from 50% of what we're doing? Then I can initiate that if you want that first and hold off on GSG. But at the same time, these things take time. So it's not the kind of thing that you'd want to do the study in the spring. When you're committed to budget, you at least want to have that answer ahead of time. So at least you need to be.
I'm sort of asking staff that you suggested and like Mayor Tim Shendure said, asking the council what they're suggesting. Do you guys have a direction, have you preferred that happen because of the timeline? I don't, when's their next meeting? I don't know their next meeting.
That's a good point.
Yeah, because it wouldn't be, they wouldn't have this at their meeting at the county meeting. There would be staff meetings at a point because they'd have to get their information together to present to their councils.
We want to try to gather all this information before the next budget meeting, May or May, so that we can try to make some kind of determination of what we have to do. If we're going to bite the bullet and tax our folks an additional 10% or raise the military rate, I want to know ahead of time. I don't want to just spring it in there it is or whatever. But I'm trying to digest this report and there's no, make no sense whatsoever in this report. It's basically telling us right now that we don't have any fire incidents in our city. Because to get a level 10, you have to have it zero to nine points. And in there it says you can get 10 points for having fire incidents. I don't get how they come up with this, but that's another conversation in a different direction.
Yeah.
I don't get it. And then the credit for ladder service, .08 points. Again.
The issue of how we got here is if we're there. But if you're looking at as ISO as being the standard, and again, they're a private company that sells their information to insurance companies. They're not federal. They're not state. They're not accredited by anybody. And they've made one decision, one decision only. You don't have enough firefighters. We don't care what else you have. We don't care that two trucks are called on every call. We don't care that you have an agreement with every other city for mutual aid. Doesn't matter. You don't have four firefighters that respond to every call. Fire them. So if we get 10 calls a year, we're talking about $600,000 for 10 calls because none of the medical calls count, which are about 95% of our business.
The thing that's interesting about waiting until April or beyond is that we're not going to be, if we do see this impact coming, if the rates do go up and we start seeing people with insurance rates going up, we're not going to be able to fix it until January next year. So we're going to spend the next 12 months doing this.
October is when it will be fact.
Well, right, though we would have to pay to see this budget. So we wouldn't be able to get these people here. They respect the budget. They can't just walk in, take the volume and start working. I'm sure you'll be close, but the thing is, I think, are there options that don't take us that long that would be easier for us to digest?
That could be in discussions with Lake County to see if there's options to that.
I'd like to know that. If there's an option there or if there are options there, I'd like to know those sooner than later. I don't want to be, I don't want to ask anybody to come in.
If there is a majority consensus in hand, that will be my first goal. And I will move as fast as we can with the county.
I say we can get consensus to ask the questions and figure it out.
Ask for options?
Yeah, if we can get those questions quickly, then we still have time. Then if we have to fall back on GSG, would you want to raise that? So we can be prepared for both of that and taxes.
So it gives us a chance to use all three options and hopefully something sooner than later?
Okay.
Everybody showing consensus, somebody ask the county for options?
I'm good with that.
I'm good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to cover the bases, there was some talk on if any of the council members wish to attend at any point in time for the county commission meeting. I would just recommend you contact city staff and let them know. So that way, in case there are two or more members that were going to attend, that they may notice that. So it would be fine, take precaution with the S H I L.
So if more than one shows up to the meeting at their meeting and speaks publicly?
We would still have to notice it for more than one of you might be somewhere, even though they've noticed their meeting was a public meeting. We'd still have to notice it in case two or more show up.
Yeah, I do notification, even if you guys go to training or anything, I'm aware. We've closed it out with that city hall.
One last thing I meant to state because a comment was made in the last meeting because we moved $250,000 over to preserve. And comment was that could have been used for fire. It was excess money in one year. There's no guarantee. And secondly, it came from the building department. We're at a real fine line. Florida law does not allow your building department to be an enterprise funding. Last week, Groveland mailed out 5,700 checks totaling $1.3 million refunding the people on permits because they took in more money than what they could justify. And that $250,000 that we moved over came from building permits. It wasn't extra taxes. And we're working hard internally to come up with everything to show what we charge is justified based on administration and cost because it's not supposed to be an enterprise funding. So saying that we can just use reserves or that we can take excess money and pay for that is an invalid assumption.
So now some towns have anything to choose from? Here or not?
Mayor, just one more thing for you, Derek. Just as a point of clarification, two members showing up at a city commission meeting, pardon, a county commission meeting does not necessarily create a violation. But having noticed there creates a prophylactic mind to make sure there will not be a violation. Because you do have to have a two-way conversation about city business for there to be a violation. But when you've got some people there who are talking about things that affect the city, there could easily be a violation. So I just want to make a point, just because there are people there. Not a violation necessarily, but still want to check in with staff and make sure it's okay. Because that's very important. Thank you very much.
Let me ask, because I hope it'll be at the City Council. Will there be an opportunity to discuss this report that we've got right here?
The ISO.
Yeah, with you and Randy would sit down or how do you want to look at this? Because I'm having a very difficult time understanding this.
Well, we can put it back on the January agenda and, because I was a part of the review process. Randy, who's been through this a lot, can tell you.
Well, and it's not just Randy's department either. No, I think it's going to also be public works. Because I'm looking at one of these items and says we haven't inspected our water system for water flow. And they're giving us a 2.4 out of 30 points. And it says we haven't done an inspection of the water flow in over four and a half years.
See, but I don't know how they get those answers.
Is that 2014? I'm reading whatever was submitted. It says 2014, 2019. And I'm just going to look at it. It says 2.4 points. They give us 2.4 points out of potential 30 points.
Now you can break down every, every part of that. How many points can be a very severe situation?
So have we done backlash for hundreds? Have we done such?
They do that every year.
Then how do we, then how do we get a, a mark down for not getting that? I'm not, see, this is, this is the part that when I'm starting reading stuff and I'm starting to look at the literal part of what's in this document, it does not make sense to me whatsoever. And I cannot go forward looking at this and not, we're not getting credit for the testing of our fire incidents. I know for a fact that our fire incidents are tested because I've had water on my street from the fire incidents.
And we put up the flash and sign and let people know. And then we tell them to flush their faucets afterwards because you get a little sediment. So I mean, I know we do.
So this report to me right now takes a lot more digestion than what we've had time for. So this is not a representation, a fair representation of what our city has.
But us going through it won't change that score. And ISO told me we will not supply somebody to your meeting. We work for the insurance companies.
I'd make the comment that I actually had talked to the CEO of the company today. And he said he'd be willing to talk to anybody that one thought to be displaying. He didn't want to explain to him. But basically the bottom line was the fourth hardship is that wants to stick to that. So, because I asked him all kinds of questions about why and that we had Groveland and everything else to go along with that. He didn't, he said, "Well, that's our rules."
And they got a mathematical calculation here that they'll have to.
And even though some of those numbers may run up and down, that we would have been a three if we hired 60?
Yeah, I didn't see that where it said, if this one thing isn't met, it's automatically 10. But when they showed that resolution that, that said, this is why you go from a 3 to 10, that's the only thing they mentioned. But I didn't see a valuation for that.
Exactly.
Well, we were lucky that the pay time that was pulled in for the 14 amendment, or 14 review was the last pay period that we had for firefighters. There was an A on that list. That was their final check, so.
When they do a check, they look back one year from the time. And that's why in 2012, or '13 it was, they went back to the previous year, which we had four hardship. And that's why the valuation became, came like a dick because they go back one year from their.
But they don't audit the whole year?
No.
Because you pulled one page.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, so they, so they, no, so they make your audit based on one page.
From a year ago, not what you have right now. So if they came back and inspected right now, we still.
The 2014 one, they asked for one in '13. The one we gave them was the last one in the year in August that showed we had four people. So after August, we didn't have four people.
I've been hitting that sheet on the floor. I think it was the sheet of the fire calls. And that's why those fire calls I gave them did have that many people on it. That's how that was evaluated. And that's why the fire calls we gave them for this past one only had two people on it.
And again, and again, I would go back that whether it's five calls or 10 calls, they're expecting you to spend that money because of a fire call, which is the least of what we do anymore. We have mobile medical departments.
So are they also evaluating the fire calls that we're doing for Lake County? Or is it just our calls? Or is it every call that our unit has responded?
Randy.
Well, I understand all the same Mascot. Last year we had one major fire in Mascot.
So that in a sense, I mean, even higher, that $600,000.
We had six or eight calls in the county, I can't remember, for fire.
Okay, I got the consensus. We please contact the county tomorrow and get some information and dialogue. Don't forget to read back some motions.
Can you email out those as soon as you get it? Can you email out those like as soon as you get it, because they're timed in for me? I'm.
I will get it to you all if I get the information so that everybody has it and one so we can discuss it in the meeting because this is the only time we can all do that together. The only question I need to ask then is, do you want to hold off on GSG at this point?
I don't want to spend $9,000 if it might be something free.
Okay, that's true.
I heard from Jennifer, can you not use the previous one we had? Because that went up to $253.
That would only allow us to raise it to 53. We're still going to have to double it above that. In order to double it, you need to step.
Any other comments? Try this again. Any adjournments?